Let me call this meeting to order. Thank you for coming. Welcome to our October 8th council meeting. I'm showing at 7:30 PM on the dot. Mrs. R. C. C., would you please call the roll?
Ms. Darrell, here. Mr. Engel.
Here.
Ms. Hannekin.
Here.
Mr. Molnar.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
At this point, I would like to ask everyone to stand. Please remove your hats as I invite our council president Rita Darrell to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, after which Councilman Nick Molnar will lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God of all creation, we come before you today to give your honor and praise. You are worthy of praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all of our blessings. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come together and gather together this day. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting. Amen.
This evening, we have a proclamation for a very important cause. Whereas in 2015, an estimated 48,000 people or more will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and of those, 40,000 will die from the disease. Approximately 1,720 deaths occur in Ohio in 2015, and an estimated 367,000 new pancreatic cases are diagnosed globally each year. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, it's currently the far fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States and is projected to become the second by 2020. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 7%. Whereas when systems of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it generally is in the last stage, and 73% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 93% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Macedonia are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into the early detection causes and effective treatments. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor designate November 13th as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the city of Macedonia. A very fitting cause indeed. All right. We're going to move right into our first section of the meeting in which we have comments by the public. You're welcome to come up to the front. You speak your piece.
We have minutes. We can approve.
Oh, we have minutes. I'm sorry. I didn't have that. All right. We have minutes to be approved. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes for that have been provided by the clerk.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Now, we'll move into comments by the public. Come to the front. We have a microphone here for you. Please try and limit your comments to five minutes. State your name and address when you come up to the front. In order to speak, we ask you to sign in. And the first name on the list this evening is Liz McKinley. Liz? There you are.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for granting me an opportunity to introduce myself to you this evening. My name is Liz McKinley, and I am running for the Nordonia Hills City Schools Board of Education. My husband Sean, our four children, and myself, live in Macedonia. Our three oldest attend the high school, the middle school, and Ledgeview Elementary. Our youngest, who is only three, will join the Nordonia Hills family in due time. I hold 15 years of educational experience and have a master's in curriculum and instruction. Over the years, I've been involved in various committees such as safety, report cards, math curriculum, science curriculum, as well as building leadership. I believe that our school board needs a member that has a solid understanding of educational policy, curricular and instructional design, and 21st century learning. Strong background knowledge in these areas will better equip our school board to offer more thorough oversight. This November 3rd, our community will be asked to vote on individuals to lead our school district forward. I believe that those elected need to create a balance of knowledge and skills that will drive Nordonia Hills in a positive direction, offering strong academic opportunities for all students while being fiscally responsible and undeniably transparent. I stand before you tonight to respectfully ask for your vote on November 3rd. Thank you. And I live at 1193 Lane's End in Macedonia.
All right. Good luck to you, Liz.
Thank you.
Next on the list is George Plock.
Mayor, members of council, if you recall, two weeks ago, Mr. Miglerini came for you and threatened to sue Ms. Hannekin and Ms. Darrell for defamation. I think Mr. Miglerini alleged that Ms. Hannekin and Ms. Darrell were falsely telling the residents of Macedonia that he had been criminally investigated when he was mayor back in the '90s. Well, I had the chance to investigate Mr. Miglerini's allegations, and I found a letter from Fred Zuck, who was then the chief counsel in the criminal division for Summit County. And in this letter, Mr. Zuck addressed it to David Freel, who is the director of the Ohio Ethics Commission. And he contained within it numerous pages containing allegations that Mr. Miglerini involved in theft in office, unlawful interest in public contracts, and improper compensation. In fact, the Ohio Ethics Commission did investigate Mr. Miglerini for four years. And in 2000, David Freel, as its director, forwarded the findings of his investigation to Sherry Bevan Walsh. At the time that he provided his information to Sherry Bevan Walsh, he was asked to comment on the findings. And Mr. Freel said, "I cannot comment on the substantive findings of my commission, but it's fair to say that I would not be forwarding this information to the prosecutor unless the commission had found probable cause." So, Ms. Hannekin, Ms. Darrell, you should not be concerned with a defamation lawsuit because truth is a complete defense to an allegation of defamation. And regarding defamation, on behalf of Mr. Barnhart, or Justin Barnhart, and our client, Scott Schwab, I would ask that the city mitigate its damages, reinstate Mr. Schwab to his position, and honor Judge O'Brien's rule. And I can assure the city that the case was dismissed for valid reasons, which I am not at liberty to discuss at this time. But please do the right thing and put Mr. Schwab back in office. Thank you. By the way, I did find all this information regarding the investigation on a website called macedoniaohio.info, and other people can see the complete investigation right there.
Next is Joe Miglerini.
Mayor, council, Joe Miglerini, 1182 mid-court, resident of Macedonia for 38 years. And sometimes I vacation in Florida, but never for six months at a time. I wish I could. I vacation down there periodically through the winter months. Needed to emphasize that. I wasn't going to stand up here and talk about the remarks that were just made, but given the fact that he made such stringent remarks about me, I need to obviously defend myself, and I will. First of all, why would anybody in this room want to believe a guy who is standing here who is suing the city for millions of dollars and the Parkview Homeowners Association when in fact, he didn't tell the Parkview Homeowners Association the correct story when he was on the board itself? Got a lot split? Said he owned the property when he didn't own the property? He came to the city, got a lot split. A week after the property transferred, he had to go back to the original owner and ask him to sign off on a document that showed the lot split when in fact, he wasn't the owner. So there's a lot of issues here. The man is suing our homeowners association. Everyone in the Parkview Homeowners Association is very, very upset with him because he split a lot into two lots. And he's suing the city of Macedonia for millions of dollars, and our association, by the way. So for him to stand up here and for him to have any credibility is like kneeling in my mind. But let me go on and say something to you. When I was mayor of this city from 1988 through 2001, my nemesis, which there were a few, lodged a complaint against me as a result of the Parkview subdivision, if you will. That was investigated, yes. It was investigated from 1995, 96, through probably 2001 or 2002. I left the city in 2001 not under a blanket of investigation, not that I was concerned about their allegations because they didn't amount to anything. I left to become the director of development for Summit County. And I was there for four years when I retired in 2005. And in fact, the prosecutor in Cuyahoga County, because Sherry didn't want to deal with the case, Sherry Bevan Walsh, she sent it to Cuyahoga County so she would get an independent counsel prosecutor to view this case. And all it was is that they said when this Parkview subdivision came before the city's planning commission, that I recused myself as the chair of the planning commission, and I sat in the audience. And when they discussed it, I took no part. However, the investigator said that wasn't good enough that I sat in the audience. I should have removed myself from the room. That was the only issue to which I was being investigated. And it was lodged with all of this propaganda that we have in this community. It's very unfortunate that this community has people that have hatred in their hearts that are just no-gooders. And all they do is throw mud, and they sling mud. And it doesn't ever stick, if you will. You know? We've gone to the board of elections twice. Mr. Lombinger took me to the board of elections two, three years ago on the same issue that I was taken to just recently about my residency. And I won that case back two years ago, and that was on a criminal charge. And I won that case alleging that I voted in Macedonia when I shouldn't have. I won that case. The next two years, I win the next case. Take me to the Ohio Elections Commission, I win that case. You can continue to throw as much as you want to throw at me. I'm a big boy. I got wide shoulders, and I can take anything you throw at me. Keep nodding, George. So with that, I have one other item. As I have been walking through the community and talking to residents, I got to the Sioux and Shepherd Hills Boulevard where we have the road closed. And there's much concern at why that road is closed down. And then I called and talked with Nick Feeney. And Nick said, "Well, we got environmental issues. We got to get through the EPA. We got to get through the Army Corps of Engineer." My suggestion to the city is that this is a health, safety, and welfare issue. Nor the Army Corps of Engineer, or the Summer Water and Soil, or any of those agencies can prohibit the city from opening up a street for the health and safety and welfare of this city. And those bureaucrats that we have in those areas should be removed, and we should be able to move forward, get this bid process completed, get that road open for these residents because it really is a health, safety, and welfare. Our police, our fire, they can't get through. So I would suggest and recommend that if there's any type of permitting, you should just do it under the premise of a health, safety, and welfare issue. And I thank you for your time and attention.
That's it for public comments this evening. So we're going to move right into pending and/or new legislation, starting with ordinance number 52, 2015. And if I may, please ask this evening that we try not to have comments made during the discussion of legislation or at any other time. I would sincerely appreciate that. Also, phone calls. We've been getting a lot of people where you get a phone call during the meeting. Please turn all your phones on vibrate because other people are complaining to me that they can't hear. So with that, we'll go on with ordinance number 52, 2015.
Mayor, I'd like to ask that we hold ordinance number 52, 2015 at second reading, please.
Second. No, it's not technically, but it's good protocol. I like it. An ordinance amending section 375, oh-three of the codified ordinances relating to snowmobiles, off-highway motorcycles, and all-purpose vehicles.
This is moving forward, and next meeting, it will be brought before council for a decision. Moving on, ordinance number 97, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 97, 2015 for a third reading by title only.
Second. An ordinance completely repealing existing ordinance section 1171-19 of the codified ordinances, donation boxes prohibited, and adopting new ordinance 1171-19, which regulates donation boxes and creates a permitting process.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Molnar, did you have some amendments you were going to make?
I'm sorry. I had worked with the folks from Planet Aid on this, and I had met with them over the weekend to amend some of the things in there. The amendments are already in there. I don't think I need to make a motion on the floor for that, do I?
Just acknowledging that the current exhibit will conform with the current exhibit. The exact language is... just to conform with the current exhibit introduced today.
I make a motion to conform to the current exhibit displayed today.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
If I may speak to those briefly, very simple things that we fixed on there. One of the things, they wanted to have multiple boxes in locations. We worked together to decide that in one structure, you're allowed to have one donation box. We didn't want to clutter our shopping areas with a bunch of those, so we kind of limited the number of boxes they could have, but they can put them in different areas around town. They have to go through a permitting process. One piece of that that we agreed upon was since they are a nonprofit organization, a 501(c)(3), that we would waive the fees for that. I think that's appropriate, given that they're a nonprofit organization. So one other piece was the letters, size of the letters on the box, which I think is very insignificant for their, you know, to say Planet Aid. It was a difference of two or three inches, so we agree that that wouldn't be an issue. So very simple fixes to move forward.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post ordinance 97, 2015 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrell.
Yes.
Mr. Engel. Ms. Hannekin.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Moving on, resolution number 118, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution 118, 2015 for a second reading by title only.
A resolution confirming the appointment of Jim Fredevic to the planning commission to fill a recent vacancy of a term ending July 3rd, 2020.
Moving on, ordinance number 119.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we table resolution number 118, 2015.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
No.
No.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrell. Mr. Engel. Ms. Hannekin.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
No.
And Ms. Tully.
Moving on to ordinance number 119, 2015.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 119, 2015 for its second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance authorizing mayor to enter into a collective bargaining amendment, addendum, with the collective bargaining units of the city of Macedonia to be effective January 1, 2016.
And what's your pleasure?
I move we pass and post ordinance number 119, 2015 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrell.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
And Ms. Tully.
After living through the times where we gave zero, after living through the times where these entities made sacrifices because of our financial situation, I wholeheartedly vote yes, it's overdue. Thank you.
I would like to thank our unions for working with the administration to come up with a figure that is actually lower than some of our surrounding communities, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance number 124, 2015.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 124, 2015 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. An ordinance confirming the appointment by the mayor of Rebecca Hansel to the position of part-time police and fire dispatcher.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number 124, 2015, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrell.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Anyone who takes this position, if you've ever talked to anyone who's had this position, they're a special breed. They're in the line of fire. They're the ones who make the call, that make or break what goes on with the person who's on the other end of that phone. I don't think I could do it. So every time we bless one of these, I want to say thank you because this person has found it within their heart that this job matches what they want to do. I, yes.
Would you like to say something, Jan?
Yeah. We've been looking for part-time dispatchers for over a year. They are hard to come by. As Jan said, it takes a certain individual to do it. It is definitely not easy. And finally, our search has rewarded one candidate. She has a very tough three to four months ahead of her for the training. It's very difficult, particularly when you do it part-time. It is three to four months when you're doing it full-time for the training. Excuse me. So when you're only doing it part-time, it takes longer. You come back to work after a few days off, and you have to play catch-up of what you learned last week. Even when you're out of training, I mean, there's so much to learn, and it takes years for these girls, for these dispatchers, because we have male, to become proficient and good at what they do. And they're extremely hard to come by. So I am so thankful. We finally found one. She is a Macedonia resident, which will be helpful with the location because you have to know a lot of the city and surrounding suburbs. So that's important. We dispatch for Sagamow. We dispatch for Northfield Village. So we're very happy. I want to thank council for this. This is a wonderful thing. Because we are losing one of our full-time dispatchers, she is retiring here in a couple days. So we have a void that definitely needs to be filled. So thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jan. Next, we move on to ordinance number 125, 2015.
Mayor, I offer ordinance 125, 2015 for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance creating new chapter 182 of the codified ordinances of Macedonia, Ohio, that is Ohio, even though it doesn't have a "no," regarding municipal income tax.
And next would be resolution number 126, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number 126, 2015 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. A resolution authorizing advance of local taxes by Summit County Fiscal Office of the city of, to the city of Macedonia for 2015 taxes payable in 2016.
Are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening?
Oh, sir, yeah. We need to adopt them.
Very good.
That would be nice.
Yeah. I'm sorry about that, Josephine. Thank God we have you. All right. What's your pleasure on this?
I move we pass and post resolution number 126, 2015 according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Roll call.
Ms. Darrell.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Now, are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to cancel the meeting of Thursday, November 26th in observance of the day of Thanksgiving.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Are there any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, we'll move on to correspondence to the clerk.
I have none, sir.
Mayor's report. Briefly, I've talked about our fire department with you in the past, and we all know that we have one of the best that is rated in the top 1% of the country. Today, I want to touch on our Macedonia fire explorers, who also rate highly locally. I was invited to attend an explorer get-together the other night and was very impressed with the attitude in the image day portrait of our city. They traveled to Washington and to the World Trade Center in New York. What an excellent group that brought pride to the fire department and to the city they represented. Thanks to the young men and women, their chaperone Lieutenant Paul Solinsky, for organizing such a great experience for these young people. A special thanks go to Jersey Mike Subs and Roger Mitro, who donated $3,000 towards the trip. I would like to thank these young people for representing us so well. The explorers are affiliated with the Boy Scouts of America, and the program is open to young adults aged 14 to 20. For more information, call Lieutenant Paul Solinsky at 330-468-8339, or contact my office. What a surreal experience. They had to be able to get a firsthand glimpse at the depth of the tragedy, as well as the heroism of the first responders. I'm sure this is something many of them will never forget. Just to give you a quick heads up, we did receive funds from the $11.5 million settlement with Morton Salt and Cargill by the Attorney General Mike DeWine for price fixing roads salt. There were 850 municipalities involved in this recovery. We received $15,415.48, which was our share of that settlement. That will help pay for the new equipment we purchased to make our roads safer this coming winter. Total revenue from the courts in September were $46,034.29. Are there any committee reports this evening? committee reports this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify the time for the finance committee meeting. It's at seven PM October fifteenth.
Are there any other committee reports?
Mr. Mayor, regarding-
We would do that on the twenty-ninth. How, just get to the fifteenth.
That was the original date, and you were the only one that could not attend.
I also asked for the twenty-ninth.
We have to get some of this done fairly soon, because it has to be updated prior to the meetings on the twenty-ninth.
Perhaps you could explain why you held and voted to hold the appointment for the Planning Commission, and why that does not apply to the budget that could also be held and be started after the election, one week later, the week of November third. In, in our work session, it was stated that you wanted to hold the Planning Commission appointment till the new mayor was in place, and let the new mayor appoint. The budget has until March to be approved. The budget is created by the mayor, as well as the department heads. It is not created by city council. It is the administration's budget. I don't see why we would go forth with any meeting on the budget until after the election, when that newly-elected mayor can work with the administration to put together the budget and give it to council. We're looking at three weeks. We're not looking at months.
I agree with that, and I will not be presenting a budget. I will leave that for the mayor-elect.
Yeah, the finance meeting is to review where we are with the, uh, budget, where this year, and to project where we are going to have needs for next year. We don't have a final, obviously. Let me just address what was being said here. It's a totally different issue from the appointments to a long-term planning commission. See, this is purely to have a preliminary look at all the factors affecting next year's budget, and to look at some of the capital needs that we have longer term, which, uh, we do have input on from earlier this year. I'm going, I tried to put that together in a five-year capital plan, and it's just to work on the process. This is not the final budget, and the, obviously the council has input on all of this, and I'm just simply asking for cooperation. I don't see any problem with that. And if the new, if the new mayor is pleased with what we've done, then we will proceed a little faster than if they're not, so.
Are you having the department heads at the meeting?
Well, they were going to be invited, and, uh-
What are you going to talk about? In the past, the budget is usually presented from the department heads and the mayor, and council works together. The council doesn't create it. This year, it was created by a couple people, with the department heads not even invited to most of the meetings.
That's not true, Jan.
So I want people to realize that I have emails of department heads saying they didn't know of meetings.
Well, we have video that they were there.
I think it's imperative that, you know, I, I just say it one more time.
Yes, you're lying about that.
If they're gonna have, if they're gonna have a finance meeting to talk about the current state of the budget, we used to do that once a month and once a quarter. We haven't done it at all since you've been here.
Yeah, let's just say this. We had a complete review with all the department heads. It's on video. It's not like a surprise. So what you're saying is incorrect. What I am saying is, we're gonna have another review here. We're gonna begin a construction, and it will be in a draft format, and we are simply trying to get, to have cooperation. Uh, I see no problem, and we need to move on from this discussion.
I don't think we need to move on from this discussion, because it's rude to the department heads to say you're gonna create their budget. You presented us a draft of a capital plan that they had zero input in, so.
I'm not going to debate this nonsense with you, Jan. Let's just move on.
I'm doing this for the city and the residents.
You're doing it to create an issue, and there isn't one. So please.
There is an issue. We're gonna be-
You have an issue. You've stated your opinion. Now let's move on.
I'd like to state my opinion. We, we have asked for the date to be accommodated by all members of council. Now, we, I thought agreed on the twenty-ninth. You've just changed it back to the fifteenth, knowing that Jan and I cannot attend that date. On at least three other occasions, we've moved regular council meetings to accommodate some things from Ms. Darrow. I'm asking for that same respect on this side of the table.
I'm, I asked for this a couple of weeks ago. I'm doing it on, on an alternate Thursday,
Just like having meetings on a Sunday, I'm asking you to respectfully-
It's not Sunday, it's Thursday. Thank you.
-accommodate everyone to, to attend the meeting. So are you choosing to not change the meeting date?
I am choosing to proceed with this meeting date, and we will have a meeting on the twenty-ninth.
So you will not accommodate all members of council?
Well, I have tried to do that, and you, you folks are trying to stall this meeting. I don't know why.
Why would we want to stall it?
Yes, you are. Please, let's move on.
Mr. Mayor, Planning Commission will meet October nineteenth at five thirty. There, there are several issues that are, I've just learned about that will be addressed. Two of them of particular note are on, are on High Point Drive. One of them is the reliable snow plowing facility where they're making some changes, and the other is the Ambassador Soccer Facility, which has presented a final site plan. So, anyone who might be interested in those issues, uh, the meeting will be on October nineteenth at five thirty.
Are there any other committee reports? Hearing none, department reports. John?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and in our efforts to help with the awareness, we have lit the gazebo at our Veterans Memorial Park in pink at night. It will remain in pink until around October nineteenth, when we will change over to some Halloween decor. Lightly, but we're just, we're having a little fun doing this, so bear with us. It's a project in the works. Um, to reiterate from our last council meeting, I discussed the leaf pickup program. Still tentatively looking at October nineteenth, but right now, Mother Nature's not cooperating. The leaves are starting to turn a little bit, but we need some good rain and wind to help bring them down the rest of the way. But we're still gonna hold on to that date right now. And like discussed before, with putting your piles out there, no wider than twelve feet, so we can reach them. If you have a ditch line with the roadway that's too narrow, please keep them on the inside of the ditch line of your properties, and we will rake them out to the machine. Keep them off the roadways, because, uh, you can't, can't go obstructing traffic. And also with sidewalks, in some of the curb streets, please keep them off the sidewalks, so families can enjoy them and not have to go out onto the roads, or, you know, children on their bicycles. Um, our senior snow plowing applications are on hold right now, because we're still waiting for other bids. Wanted to get three bids from contractors. Reached out to seven local businesses right now and have only received one so far. Next Monday, I'm going to call the, call the contracts again to try to get another bid, but if do not receive anything on, uh, Fri-, on the following Friday, which would be the, uh, with the twelfth, we're gonna move forward with the bid, or bids that we do have, and then, uh, hopefully by the twenty-third to have the applications made out, uh, for residents. And then also our park over here at, uh, Park in eighty-two, our Safety Forces Memorial, we have begun grading work over there and lined the south side with a buffer, a landscape of arborvitae's, and, uh, we will be moving forward with that after we have a planning meeting to discuss, uh, further plans at that park. And that's all I have.
Very good. Angela?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remind everybody that the annual Macedonia Winter Craft Show is scheduled for November fourteenth, from nine to two at Lee Eaton Elementary. Um, I will remind everybody, uh, for those who want to attend a little bit closer to the event, but I am making the announcements now, because, uh, we are accepting applications for vendors at this point in time. So, uh, applications can be picked up at the rec center, and, uh, you can register at the rec center as well. Uh, one exciting thing that we've been working on, on for quite a while, if anyone recalls, our Macedonia Recreation Center website was hacked over the summer, and, um, unfortunately, it reverted back to several years ago. We have revamped that site so many times since that point in time that our website, uh, was significantly damaged. And, uh, instead of trying to rebuild that same site, we've been working on a brand-new site that we hope goes live within the next few days. Uh, we've put a lot of work and effort into this, and, uh, if you don't know our web address, it is macrec.com. It'll be much more up-to-date and current. Uh, you'll be able to go there for, uh, new programs, registration information, uh, swim team's starting soon. You can check pool schedules, um, as an extra added convenience, and we are also upgrading our software, so that we will be able to implement online registration soon and membership renewals. So we have a, a lot of elements, uh, that are going into this website, that we are hoping will be, um, an added convenience to our members and people who, um, utilize the recreation center. So we're very excited about that. Um, we also, for those of you, um, who are on Facebook, we have a Facebook page, and we utilize that quite a bit. Uh, we get a lot of information out. We have a lot of people who, who follow us on Facebook, so we're able to communicate last-minute, um, in- information as far as cancellations of soccer games, or, um, you know, different building closings, things, things of that nature for holidays. So, check us out on Facebook and follow us, um, if you'd like up-to-date current information on a weekly basis, and, uh, otherwise, check out our website, macrec.com, for our brand-new website, and, uh, you can follow that and keep, keep to date on all of our events and programs as well on there.
Thank you.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. On October twenty-fifth, we have our annual Halloween party at the fire station. Uh, it's from four till six. It's a great alternative to bring younger kids to. Uh, we have candy bags and costume contests and cookies. Um, and then we have our annual, uh, our trick-or-treat night is set for Saturday, the thirty-first, from six till eight. Uh, make sure if the kids are going out, that they're well-lit. They don't have any masks that are covering their face, and of course, uh, they're, they don't have any trip hazards, that they're costumed, and then make sure that it is not flammable. Um, it's good suggestion, so it's always good to go out with an adult during that, or come to our Halloween party. That would be even better. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Very good. John?
Uh, some of you may have saw Channel Five was up front, uh, before the council meeting. I did a, an interview for Channel Five. Uh, they caught a story that I put on the Macedonia Police Department Facebook page, referenced cellular nine-one-one. Uh, I forwarded the mayor a, a brief, uh, introduction to, and I think he forwarded to council. Um, this law is gonna take effect January first, two thousand and sixteen, and the basic gist is, all your cellular nine-one-one calls will be routed in, in northern Summit County. So Twinsburg, Reminderville, Macedonia, and Northfield Center, Sagamore Hills, Richfield, Richfield Township, Boston Heights, Hudson, the whole gamut, the whole northern tier of the county is gonna be routed to Stowe Dispatch, instead of like it used to be, where it goes to the local police department. Again, this is a state law, takes effect January first. Uh, all the police chiefs, fire chiefs are against this. We're adding one more step to a nine-one-one call. It's craziness. This is nowhere near a step in the right direction. We are going backwards. And if you want more details on that, you can check out the Macedonia Police Department Facebook page. I believe Twinsburg put something out there. Um, you may be able to catch, uh, the, just snippet I did on, for Channel Five, uh, or you can call my office. Uh, you can probably do some research. This does not save any money whatsoever. This will cost lives, because it's adding at least one step, maybe two, to your nine-one-one call. We will still get, all the local agencies will still get your landline nine-one-one, or your VoIP nine-one-one calls. They still go to the local agency. Cellular calls will now all go to Stowe, and it's at least eighty, eighty-one percent of all nine-one-one calls nowadays are cellular. And, and I want to be very clear, I'm not being critical of the Stowe Dispatch. Again, they do a fantastic job. It's just, there's no reason to put them into this mix. There's no reason to add one or two more steps to this. It doesn't make any sense. So if you want more details, you can check out Facebook. I believe Twinsburg put something on there. It's on our Facebook page, or you can give me a call.
Chief, is there an opportunity to have them reverse the decision?
Well, of course, when the state does things, they tie money to it. That's the only way that they can force compliance. Um, Russ Pry is in a sticky situation now. He complies with the state law, or he loses fifty percent of Summit County's money, which will be four hundred thousand dollars-ish, something in that ballpark. Uh, so he's in a tough situation. Russ Pry is a good man, um, but money talks. What needs to happen is the state needs to repeal this law. I don't understand how people in Columbus, who know nothing about dispatch, can decide what's best for each individual county. That doesn't make sense. Adding this step is going the wrong way. And they can say, some of, you know, most of the counties in Ohio have one answering point. Cogga County has CCOMs. My people deal with CCOMs. That's not the direction that you want to go. You want to go to your local agency. My dispatchers will get that emergency call out immediately. We usually are dispatching police and fire within thirty seconds, sometimes less. Now it's going to go to Stowe. They're gonna have to figure out where it is. Pray to God they send it to the right agency, because I can't expect Stowe dispatchers to know all the boundaries of northern Summit County. You know, we have Shepherd Road, some of it's Twinsburg, some of it's Macedonia. Ledge Road, some is Northfield, some is Macedonia. There are many places, we've got two interstates just in Macedonia alone. It's very difficult to determine where these calls are. The local dispatchers know. They know the landmarks. They know the questions to ask to determine where these folks are. There's nothing wrong with Stowe, but there's nothing right about forcing Summit County, northern half of Summit County, to do this. The state law needs to be repealed. That's where, where it's at. Now Russ Pry can say, we're not gonna do this for six months or so, and try to work something out here. It's gonna lose some money, but that's basically where it is. And again, you can check out more on Facebook or give me a call.
Thank you, John. Um, all right. Did Nick leave? I saw him here earlier. Okay. Mark, do you have anything?
Yeah, in, uh, part of what the chief was talking about is the push towards regionalization. I think the way that the state legislature has set it up is for there to be, the end goal is to have several regionalized dispatch centers in the state, and the chief's right, they, the incentive, the carrot is, uh, funding. Whether that's gonna happen or not, um, seems pretty unlikely, at least accomplishing that goal by, um, two thousand and eight, twenty-eighteen. Um, regarding Judge O'Brien's decision that was mentioned earlier in the meeting, the Law Department has reviewed that decision and determined that it doesn't comport with applicable law. Um, so we have, uh, on behalf of the city, filed an appeal, uh, with your authorization as of this morning, Mayor. Um, so that will be reviewed by the Ninth District Court of Appeals in due course. And if I could, I also have a letter from the Law Director, if I could, uh, read that. Mayor, Administration, Council, and Residents. After twenty-five years of service as the Director of Law of this community, I've determined that I will not continue in that capacity after a new mayor takes office in December. The Law Director should not be a political issue. We are a resource for all officials to do their jobs. I make this announcement now, so that I take myself out of any political attacks on my integrity, or posturing by a candidate Hannigan, and/or a few negative allies during the next several weeks. Although I did not know Mr. Miglerini at the time I was appointed twenty-five years ago, we had great success for Macedonia over fourteen years. Having a good relationship with the other officials in order to do the people's work is a good thing, and very important in any enterprise. Over my forty-four-year legal career, I have worked as chief legal officer in fifteen different communities, and all the mayors became my friends. Rarely have I seen as much contentiousness as I have seen in Macedonia the past two years. It is sad that just a few council persons can disrupt or intimidate those who have tried to do the best they can for the citizens, such as the truly dedicated Mayor Don Cooktop. In her couple of ye- years in office, Ms. Hannigan has brought critical antagonism between all the administration and council, while during that same time refused to seek legal direction on the lawful manner to do Macedonia's business, even though she lacked the most basic understanding of municipal government. Therefore, I have no trust in her integrity to work with any legitimate law director in the future. It's a simple thing to provide safety and public service to our residents. It sometimes becomes difficult to do so with the myriad of federal and state laws that are applicable. We have always done our best and have been successful a hundred percent of the time. The options presented to me this campaign season have made my decision for the future simple. I cannot serve as Law Director for a friend and have him or I criticized for doing so. And I will never work for Ms. Hannigan, who I believe to be lacking integrity, and who does not have the best interests of the citizens at heart. This has been and is my profession. I'd rather give it up in Macedonia than be subject to or witness further abuses. Sincerely, Joseph W. Deemer, Junior Director of Law. End of report.
May I address some of the issues raised by the Law Department?
I'm not surprised that they're appealing the decision, and I think the decision, the filed the case in the Court of Common Pleas was purely political. I think the decision to appeal is purely political. Particularly in fact, the fact that the law director said he was going to appeal in the newspaper even before he had seen the decision of the judge. The judge dismissed the case against myself for failure to state a claim upon which relief can be granted. That's a long sentence. But what it means is that the court has to accept everything that's pled as true, everything they said. And then the court determines that there no law exists supporting the claims made, the facts alleged are insufficient to state a claim, or there is an insurmountable bar on the face of the complaint which would prevent them from recovery. I think you should go on the Court of Common Pleas Clerk of Court's website. You can get a full site or a full copy of the decision. It's 11 pages. I think you should read it and make up your own mind. I didn't raise this issue at the trial court, but I'm raising it now. I think this is frivolous conduct. It's Rule 11. It's sanctionable. I welcome your appeal, but I will seek attorney's fees and make a contribution to the manor house. It's purely political crap.
Is there any unfinished business?
Yes, Mayor. I wanna touch on the Soulane Culver repair. I've had a lot of calls lately about that and what's going on. Where we are currently, there's easement letters going out to three residents. What that basically means is we're asking them to go onto their property to do some work. So if they agree to let us go onto their property to do their work, we'll be able to correct that problem. If they don't agree to it, then we have to go down another road of, you know, potential legal problems, which we hope to avoid. But essentially, anything that they have is not gonna be touched. I looked at Nick Feeney's drawings. I looked at all the engineering that went along with it. I don't think we're gonna disrupt anyone's property. It's not gonna have any impact on them at all, and they will put it back exactly the way they found it. So, the resolve for that is in those hands right now. Those letters should be at those residents' houses. I think there's three properties affected. They should have those letters tomorrow. So hopefully, there's nothing there that is of controversy, and everything I read seems to be legit. So hopefully, they will sign off on the easement, and we can get going on the work.
Nick, why didn't you discuss this in the work session? Because why are we just, like, hearing this right now?
Because you got the email today, just like I did.
Nick?
What email?
Yeah.
There was an email that went out today about it.
I didn't get an email.
We did not get no emails. I mean, I even asked in the work session, was there anything that anybody wanted to talk about? And you could've talked about all this there.
What's the problem that he told people?
What's the relevance?
You know, because the council does not, you choose to not communicate with us about stuff that's going on in our city.
I chose to communicate with you, and I couldn't make the meeting on the 15th, but you still decided to have it anyway.
Nick, I didn't get the email. Would you resend it to me?
Yes, and send it to me too.
I don't know. I got that from Nick sometime today.
Well, you know what? He's picking and choosing who he sends emails to, and it's wrong. You should've discussed it.
If I may, I sent the email to Nick because he asked me what's happening in regards to a complaint. So I only sent it to Nick because only he asked.
Let me just make.
It involves all of us, Don.
Well, he didn't say, "Can you please tell council he asked me as Nick?"
One of the property owners that are affected contacted me. That's why I had asked the mayor to give me more information. I don't know who he sent it to. I just know what I have.
Yeah, if I, you know, I have.
I don't know if it's controversial.
Let me just say one thing. I have talked to the residents on Soulane, and I talked to them just recently, just the other day. And two of the residents that are closest to the Culver actually don't want the Soulane to be opened up again. They've kind of expressed that very directly to me, that it's impossible to control the speed of the traffic there, and they would prefer to have that road not restored, at least as a straight through to Shepherd Hills. Just to say, that's what they said. Let me.
She had Little Berkshire close. It used to be a cul-de-sac.
Well, I understand. That's what they said. Just thought I'd let you share.
I have a couple other business, and I'm sorry I didn't call all of you to tell you, but I've been working directly with some residents, and this impacts everyone to understand situations. We get calls about fire hydrants. Why aren't they fixed? Why are they still got tape on them? Why is this one look this way versus this one look this way? And a resident had told me that someone on this DS had said we had a problem in the fire department, and therefore it wasn't fixed. Had a long discussion with the chief about Cleveland Water owns the fire department, or owns the fire hydrants. There's two different standards of threads. I mean, he's got a wealth of information in that brain of his that he can talk to about fire hydrants. We do a review of them once a year. We do flush and check with them. But they really are owned by Cleveland Water. Now that takes me over to water main breaks. Cleveland Water owns the issue. One of water main breaks. So if you've seen the corner of Driftwood and Shepherd Road, and we had a water main break. It's been a while. And you notice it's still got gravel, and it's still got white barriers. Cleveland Water will reimburse us for fixing the road. First of all, I have to say thank you to John. He immediately went out, and the guys went out and cleaned out the ditch, because everything that came out of the water main break went into the ditch. Cleveland Water is supposed to come out, and while they fix the break, clean the ditch, but we didn't know when they were gonna come to fix the break. So we took care of the ditch so wooden water wouldn't flow back up into these people's houses. The problem with the water break, then? We fix the road. They reimburse us. They wanna pass for 6 by 9 feet, and that break is probably two to three times that size for the patching. So now we're looking at how can we maybe handle more of that road within the road program. And so that leads me to another one that comes up. If you see a new light pole, a new electric pole, well, there's three entities that use that pole. I work for one of those entities who's not in this area because they haven't come into Summit County, northern Summit County. But those poles have the electric company, and they have Windstream, and they have Time Warner. So they're replacing poles. So if you go down the street, you may see two poles. You see the old pole and the new pole. Then they all gotta get together and figure out who's gonna move, excuse me, who's gonna move what at what point in time. And if you're a resident, your electricity may be on that pole. That's a concern. With the storms that we get, that just show up, these poles go down, your power goes out. If one goes down, the rest of them go down. So working with, we've worked with the service department. We're also working with the law department because we may get the electric company to move, but now we're trying to figure out how we're gonna get Windstream and Time Warner to move. And they're gonna stand there and say, "You're next." No, "You're next." No, "You're next." So these issues pop up all the time. If you have an issue, call the mayor's office right away. What's your issue? You have maybe something that we're already working on for another resident, and we wanna make sure that the more you have, the better the story you have to get action and attention. And that's a sad thing to say, but it's true. If you got one pole, nobody's probably gonna listen to you. If I got five poles, I'm getting some attention. If I've got 10, now I'm really getting someone's attention. So I just wanted to say that the service department has been, John, has been extremely responsive. The fire chief has been extremely responsive about the fire hydrant calls that I've had. And I appreciate the effort that you do to go out and talk to the residents and make sure that they understand we don't own those fire hydrants. We don't own those poles. We don't own fixing water main break. We need cooperation. Thank you.
Any other business?
Yes, I have, sorry. I wanted to, and normally I wouldn't talk about this, but this involves the labor force within the city. I've heard from a number of these people who work for the city and from people who have talked to people who work for the city that there have been rumors spread about my intentions when, if I should be elected mayor, to, for example, remove all of the full-time people and send the entire police force to part-time. I've had people alleging that I intend to get rid of the entire service department and various other ridiculous allegations that have been made. And I wouldn't mention this at all, except that it appears some of this is coming from the supervision in the departments, at least so far as it's been reported to me. So what I'd like to do is just reassure the workers in the city that there is no intent to do anything radical to them. We are going to, in fact, I've been looking at adding a detective in the police department because we do have vice issues that I don't think are being properly addressed. We have been very supportive of all of their needs. And I wanna assure them that all of these allegations and rumors are simply lies because of fear being generated, I guess, by people who support my opponent. What I'd also like to say is, or to reassure you, I want you to know, certainly all the people and unions inside of the city, that I am recently being endorsed by the Tri-County Regional Labor Council for Mayor of Macedonia. And they wouldn't have done it to anybody who is not very respectful of the role of the unions in the city. So I'm just saying to you, please realize that there will be things that, there were rumors spread that I was going to close the senior center, and I addressed that today. This is ridiculous. And they can't point to anything that I have done. In fact, I've been very supportive of all these activities, Safety Forces and of the senior center. And they can't point to any facts, but they can generate rumors, and I'm concerned that it might have been from the management level. I have had reports of that. I am going to be following up on that because some of the management is in the classified service, and I'm going to find out if that did happen. So thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
No, I have one more thing. Excuse me. This is exactly why we say you have no respect for anyone on this end of the deal.
You certainly don't have any, please. We, Ms. Clerk is asking.
You don't have any respect for anybody else but yourself.
I didn't hear who offered it. Was it you, Ms. Hannekin?
What's that?
She didn't hear who offered the motion.
I offered it.
Mr. Engel seconded.
Shocking.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
I was gonna talk about Villalago, but I guess I don't have that opportunity. No.
Ms. Tully?
I was gonna thank Brianna Brawley for her editorial. I think there are people in this audience who need to read it. Turn off your phones, and if you go outside, the doors should be shut. Thank you. No.
We are adjourned. Thanks for coming.